Meeting to order on March 4th at 6:04 PM. We're gonna have to designate Pat as an alternate tonight. We're gonna just table the approval for minutes. They're not prepared yet. So we're just gonna skip on to new business. It's gonna be Jim Crowley, Apple Core LLC, 952 Route 109, map 233, Lot 020, Site Plan Review Application for Plan Unit Development. The applicant is requesting to add apartment space to existing commercial building located within Commercial A District.
Ask him if you'd like to speak about?
Would you like to speak about the development that you're proposing? Would you like to speak about the development you're proposing?
Sure. Basically, what we're trying to... At the present time, our commercial building is certified for professional office space only, which you all know up in Acton is not very much called for professional office space. So I'd like to try to diversify enough to cover my expenses for the building by being able to have either/or. I would prefer commercial, but having it so that you can add an apartment to cover my costs is what I'm looking for. In the last five years, we've had one person request any interest in showing any of the commercial property that we had available. So nobody's asking for commercial office space. Right now, I have a photographer in one of my spaces. For the last five years, I had a real estate company. They're leaving at the 1st of June. They're gonna be moving to Sanford. So I need to make some changes. I originally came to this board to request a change in Commercial Zone A and got turned down. I decided I was gonna use my next option and go speak with a attorney that deals with this all the time. And this option that came up was an option that was available to me because basically it's the same operation as we run since 1995. So basically, what I'm asking for is to be able to put the apartment space inside of the original space of the structure that I have. No new footprint, you know, all the construction will be done inside the building. Be nothing added on the outside, nothing done on the outside, but just the two spaces that will convert into apartments, office space, apartment-type situations.
Would you like to say something?
Do you wanna go first?
Hi, Mr. Crowley, I'm Mike Gilpatrick.
What's my name?
You have this planned unit development that's been in operation as a end of stamp since 2000.
Yep.
All that is well and good. It appears that it would fit by the actin ordinance into that categorization as a mixed-use building. With that... Excuse me. Geez, with that being said, you are... You're gonna... No, I'm fine. Yeah, I think so. You're gonna incur some different permits that I'm not sure that you're aware of. When you have a mixed occupancy building, you've gotta get a fire marshal's permit.
Got 'em.
You've got all that, and you've got a design for your firewalls for the residential build, for the separations between the mixed use and all of that. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to work through that in the event that you're approved today. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that that building was approved for that, for planned unit development for a number of years, and I personally, I don't see... I think this is a good use for, from existing buildings.
And Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes, sir.
If you look at the second page of the memo that's in your packets, there's really very little external or site-related changes that are happening or proposed as part of this application. The application is really to amend the existing site plan to allow up to two residential units within the existing structure. So as Mr. Gilpatrick mentioned, there's certainly gonna be, you know, building code, things that need to be followed, other uses that may come along in the building would certainly need to meet the land use code. But the review tonight is really to look at the potential addition of up to two residential units within the structure. So, thank you.
Rule review the finding of facts on the memo that Ben was just talking about. Number one, the utilization of site. Number two is adequacy of road system. Number three is access to site. Number four is access weight, location, spacing. Number five, inter-vehicle circulation. Page three is park. Number six is parking layout and design. Seven is park, pedestrian circulation. Eight is stormwater management. Nine, erosion control. Ten, water supply. Eleven, sewage. Twelve, utilities. And thirteen, natural features.
So you booked for a motion, but... Can somebody help me remember? When you were here before, I don't think we disapproved your request, it's just that it was gonna take some time because it required an ordinance change. At least that was my recollection.
Well, the recollection that I have is the next meeting, and it was voted in table not to continue any more in reference to making any changes this year. That's what made me go...
Oh, right, yes.
Yeah, that's what made me go and look up legal counsel.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It wasn't just strictly your change, but yes.
No, I agree.
I got it. I got it. Motion discussed.
Can we get a motion to discuss this?
A motion to discuss it?
To approve, sorry, to approve.
Approve it or discuss it? To approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for Apple... Apple Core LLC.
Make it a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Oh, discussion.
Or discussion.
Sorry. I need discussion.
Ben, you're fine with all this?
The memo is really kinda going through the review criteria number by number, and I didn't see any site-related approval of things that seemed to be an issue related to the ordinance.
Right, I mean, I agree with what you're saying. I just wanted for the television, for everybody to understand that you were in support of this. Thank you, Ben.
So Ben, your view is the application is complete?
The application is complete. There are a lot of these review criteria where there weren't any submission that was relevant. There are a lot of these standards that just aren't applicable because it's already an approved site plan, and the applicant's not proposing any changes to those.
You agree too, Mike?
I do.
Anybody feel like we need a hearing or a sidewalk for this?
I personally don't.
I wouldn't think a sidewalk, everybody knows where it is.
I'm familiar with the property.
I didn't hear what you said, Mike.
Oh, it was me I said, I don't think there's this stuff needed for a sidewalk. I mean, it's been there for eons.
Not much we're gonna change on the exterior of the building. As you said before, it's gonna be mostly internal, and stormwater mitigation and everything has already been addressed in the first application.
Oh, ask the chair to move the question.
So there's a motion, and it's been seconded?
All in favor?
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't vote because Jim showed up.
Okay.
So the procedure from here is you'll be getting a letter, an approval letter, with the findings of fact, and the conclusions from the planning board, and you'll be working with the code officer on building permit issues related to the use.
Correct. Mr. Gilpatrick, I know you knew, are we running the same schedule as the previous time schedule that you're gonna be in?
Great question, thanks for asking. I'll be open for walk-ins from 9:00 to noon, Monday through Wednesday and Friday.
Okay.
Thursday, we'll be open from 4:00 to 6:00. Well, every other 4:00 to 6:00, other than when I'm here for a planning board meeting, I'll be here till 8:00 that Thursday.
Yeah.
The afternoon is by, I've asked by appointment only until I get the, until I get all the applications caught back up, because we've got a, we've got a pretty good slug of stuff that we're trying to get through.
Are you available for a meeting tomorrow?
You'll have to call Christina, she knows better than I. I just show up and she tells me where to go.
You're a smart man.
Thank you.
I will do that.
Thank you, we look forward to it.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And I'm work... Can't wait to work with Mr. Gilpatrick. I've heard some good things about him, and we'll continue from here. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Nice seeing the both here tonight.
Good luck. Mr. Driscoll, thank you. Dan, you ready? I hope your night goes as fast as this one's. You guys can be out by 7:30.
You hear that?
Thank you.
Celtics are playing.
I'm sorry, you go.
Jenna Gilbert from CV and Mayor Engineers Incorporated, representing Kelly Orchards, San Page Road, map 234, Lot 044. This is a pre-application meeting for proposed 15-acre solar array. Informational meeting to discuss a proposed 15-acre ground-mounted solar array installation within the Village and Commercial A Districts.
So before we turn it over to the applicant, this is a pre-submission meeting, it's informational item, there's nothing in your packet for this. This is gonna be a chance for the applicant to introduce the idea to the board, describe a little bit about the project, the site, and hopefully there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions and then for them to ask questions of the board as well. But there's no motion, there's no action that the board needs to take on this application since there's really no official application yet. This is a preliminary meeting that will be followed up with an application at some point going forward.
Thank you. Like you said, my name is Jenna Gilbert, this is Dan Diffen, we both work with CV and Mayor Engineers. We're here tonight to speak about a 4-megawatt solar array over at the Kelly Orchards property. I'm sure you're all familiar, right down the road. And like he said, this is a pre-application meeting, but we do have a lot of information throughout you to introduce the project, okay? So Art Kelly's not here tonight, but he has a 63-acre parcel tax map, like he said. It's within the Village and Commercial A District. It's split kind of in half between both districts. He's been using it as an apple orchard and fruit orchard for a long time. We hope to bring in this array and have him use his orchard like normal, just a bit smaller size. To speak a little bit about the site conditions, it is between 5% and 10% slope, which is pretty optimal for a ground-mounted solar array, which works on less than 20% slope. So there'd be pretty minimal grading here, which is awesome. His site does have some forested wetlands, and there may be some potential vernal pools that were delineated by Alfred Associates. And I'll show you all the plan so you can be a bit familiar. If you're not familiar with where we are, we're at the town hall. We're right across the road at Kelly Orchards property. And I can jump to the plan if you all just wanna look at the visual here. It's quite large, so just give me one second. Oops. So this is the Kelly Orchard property. Currently, Art accesses his site off of Sandborne Road. Maybe... I apologize, let me see if this works. So he accesses his site right off of Sandborne Road here, and then you come in, and there's an existing gravel road and another gravel road here. He uses this road to access his orchard and maintain his apple trees. There is additional gravel road here that's used to access a existing cell tower, part of an easement on his property. And this area within here is all forested area, there are some forested wetlands on the property, as you can see in this teal color, and back here as well by the road. There are a couple of potential vernal pools, like I said, right here. This oval around those potential vernal pools is a 250-foot setback, as deemed necessary by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So our solar array, as you can see, it faces north-south. It is gonna be accessed by San Page Road off of a 15-foot-wide gravel drive. It'll come out, it's about 800 feet, 800 feet long. And this array is 4 megawatts, like I said. The fenced-in area is about 14 acres. That fenced-in area will be accessed by a gate right here that will be locked most of the time, it'll be only accessed a couple times during the year for maintenance, routine inspection, any mowing below the array. There is planned to be a NOX box on that entrance, so the fire department can have access to that in any emergencies. And as we come in, there are six utility poles proposed with an interconnection point right off of San Page Road. And as you come in, we will have some underground conduit that heads to two small concrete pads for equipment, like an inverter or a transformer, to help power the array itself. In this layout, we will be cutting about 10 acres of trees, and that does not include the vegetation within Art's orchard itself, it's within this thicker forested area. About seven of those acres will be grubbed and stumped, the stumps will be removed, and then we will roughly smooth grade that out and add some loam if we need to, and it will be seeded with a meadow mix, so it'll act as a stabilized meadow. And it will be mowed very minimally, maybe twice a year. Those three other acres just outside of the fence will be left as stumps, and that's to provide sun, a proper sun setback to power the array itself. And we do have a small amount of wetland impact right in here from clearing. We will be leaving the stumps in that area though, so it's not gonna be a full disturbance. It'll be considered an indirect impact to those wetlands. That's about 6,500 square feet of impact right there. We are gonna be keeping out of that 250-foot setback that I did discuss before. And so... Excuse me. And along here, we will be leaving two rows of Art's taller apple orchard trees, which will act as a buffer along the access road in here. Art's home is right in here, so he shouldn't have a problem accessing his orchard, and we will be leaving the western side of his orchard and the southern side for him to continue using and access. Permitting for this project, besides the site plan permit with you all, we will be looking at a couple of Maine Department of Environmental Protection permits. We will be looking at a Natural Protected Resources Act permit for Tier 1 wetland impact, for that 6,500 square feet of impact that I spoke about. It will be that indirect impact, we wouldn't be completely disturbing the wetland. You can kind of think about it as a conversion between a forested wetland to a scrub shrub wetland, just shorter vegetation growth there. I mean, we also will be doing a stormwater permit by rural application with them, because we will be less than a full acre of impervious area that we're adding. It's only about 15,000, between 16,000 square feet of impervious area from the roadway and the equipment pads, and a very small amount of area from the ground-mounted foundations for the entire array. All right, so I think I've covered just about everything. Dan, can you think of anything that I missed?
Yeah, if I could just add, I think Jenna may have mentioned it, but just to highlight that the array itself will be surrounded with a high tensile knot-fenced wire fence. So it'll be fully enclosed, that's part of the electrical code, it needs to be completely enclosed like that. It'll be about seven feet high, so that folks can't climb over it. We try to avoid giving them access because emergency vehicles don't typically have to access this site. Traffic out here after construction is really just a trip once or twice a year to mow it, and then the rest of the time, it's really just left to operate. Roads usually aren't plowed in the winter unless the landowner requests it or the fire department requires it. So it's really a low-impact use of this property, and it's been a really good discussion with Art back and forth about what's important for him out there to protect from his orchard versus what he's willing to sort of lease to these solar developers. And we are working for a company called, I think, Acton Solar LLC, so that'll be on the application as well that we submit. So thank you, we're really looking for some feedback here on the project as a whole, if anything we should really focus on in our application from you folks, or if there's any concerns or roadblocks you see that we should talk about tonight as we prepare the application.
And I do wanna add here that there aren't gonna be any buildings, we don't need any sewer or water utilities to the site, and it doesn't generate any waste, so we won't need any waste disposal on this site. Thank you.
What happens to the power that you generate? What do you do with that?
Well, it actually gets sent out right through those utility poles back into the grid.
Goes into the grid, yeah. It becomes part of the electrical pool in the state that you purchase your power from.
Wow, that's good.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The project that we did last fall, last summer, I wonder fencing on that, I don't remember, I think we asked for an eight-foot fence on that. I really don't remember, I'd have to look that. And so there's no building there. As anybody knows, you know, that's probably, I mean, he's already cut down the trees, the piece you're talking about using, I assume, is where he's already cut the trees?
No, not necessarily, I think he's cut it previously in the past, but it's been years and it has grown back.
You may be thinking, if you've been...
The apple trees.
Yeah, if you've been out there recently, he's cut a portion of the trees over here that have gone away.
Apple trees?
Yeah.
Is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, he's planning on replanting that area.
So he's gonna replant that?
Correct, yep.
And so you guys will be going in pretty much right across from the post office.
So this line right here is the existing tree line, so for the orchard, the only area we're disturbing is this area, and then we're taking a chunk of what he considers his low-value, I think they're macintosh over here. We're keeping his nice blueberry bushes that he likes, and I think his wife was a big part of that as well. She appreciates those bushes over there, so we kind of, at first, we were planning on taking a much larger area of his orchard, but we really worked with him to thread the needle with his orchard and the wetlands on the other side.
Right, so you're gonna basically have that solar in where he's already cut the trees? And maybe a little bit more?
A little bit more, yeah.
Yes, Mike?
How do you calculate the depreciation of the teardown or decommissioning of these panels?
Yeah, it's a good question, and we're getting that a lot, for sure.
That was where I was going.
There is a decommissioning bond that is typically discussed between the town and the developer, where we would submit a plan to you all as part of a, typically it's a condition of approval because we wanna get everything figured out before we sign it formally with the town. And then in that document is a calculation for salvage value, so that after 20 years, this is gonna be a 20-year lease with an option to extend to 40, so that at any point in that 20 years, if it stops operation for more than 24 months, you can enact that decommissioning plan, you can reach out and say, hey, this isn't doing anything, it's taken up a bunch of area that could be turned back to orchard if it's not doing anything, we want you to take it out, and if they say no, you have this bond or this plan in place that you can use to kind of require they take it out, yeah.
I guess that was my question, is how do we arrive in a semi-accurate figure with the decommissioning? I mean, that's pretty tough, like in the building industry alone, last year and a half, it's, we've seen an increase of 43% roughly. So that concerns me a little.
Understood, let us, as part of the application, submit one of those plans for your review that includes those costs. We actually worked with the firm, because solar is really new to Maine, so there's not a lot of companies in Maine that do that sort of calculation. They do it a ton in Mass because Mass has been built out of a bunch of really cool solar projects. So we'll submit that plan for your review as part of the application with that detail.
Thank you.
This is just informational. I don't remember what we took for a price on the last one we did, and what number we used. The last few years, the town has started accepting bonds, and we've changed to having escrow accounts, because we have been left high and dry with some bonds in the past, and so that's why we've changed to have an escrow account. And myself, personally, that's what I would want, and I'd be very interested to see what the escrow account we set up for the last solar project that was approved in town. And the last time we went through this was a different outfit. I had asked, and apparently is common practice, for the town to get some, for lack of better words, free electricity out of these projects. And that does happen in places, to get some kind of subsidy, for example, with the school, the fire department, get something out of this power that's being generated. something out of this power that's being generated. Due to circumstances, the last time, and I want you to know this 100%, I'm going to say it this time, I am not holding you hostage on this idea that we can get some kind of a subsidy as a town on the electricity that's generated, but I would like you to look into if that's something is possible.
We certainly can, and we should have been a little more clear. This is planned to be a community solar project, which, there are instances, and we've worked on several solar projects, where it's really geared toward the town, where the town partners with a solar developer to put in the development, and that power that's created goes right to the town instead of going out to the grid. Or it goes out to the grid and the town gets it for free, or however that works out. This development is community scale, which is targeted more for folks to buy into a program. And what we've talked about in the past with other towns is, we can certainly work with the folks of the town to see if there's an opportunity for them to reserve a spot early on the process. So we'll look into that for the application. In terms of providing a subsidy with this type of development, it's not common practice for community solar, but we'll look into it and get you an answer for the application.
I probably used the wrong word.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No one may.
Subsidy is kind of a risky word to use.
Yeah, I probably did use the wrong word.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just maybe one final thought on the removal bond or the removal guarantee is something that is pretty standard, and we've reviewed those in the past. Typically, the amount of the guarantee is something that comes after the approval. Like, a condition on the plan would require a guarantee to remove a non-functioning system. But it's, you know, rarely have I seen a board get into the estimates and the numbers and make a requirement. Usually, that's something the town administrator or code enforcement would handle.
I appreciate that, Dan.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I was just, you know, what would you use for a number on the last project?
That's a fair point.
And where Mike, I believe, is new to this. I just, it was just a reference, you know?
Yep.
We'd really welcome a copy of that agreement you had with the last outfit, too, to model some of the verbiage after, if you're comfortable with that agreement. Does that make sense, if you can get that to us?
I'm sure that is part of the public record. I don't have any issues with that off the top. You had mentioned on this plan that, you know, certainly everything around the panels, and I can see a fence shown around the panel area, but you'd also mentioned that there's going to be some clearing kind of on the easterly side or the northeasterly side. Is there a line on this plant? It might be hard to see if this...
It is hard to see, right. So the clearing line is right along the setback right here and travels up around the wetland up here. And along here, it's, the existing tree line is setback quite a bit. They don't need to cut in there, and we don't want to disturb within the setback in that area. So the tree line is up around here, and then the existing tree line follows right along here.
So we're clearing to the wetlands, essentially, into the vernal pool setback.
Gotcha. Okay, and that's primarily for, to avoid trees shading panels on that side of it.
Right, yeah. They want to get the capacity of the four megawatts out of the array that they have laid out here.
The other question that I had related to that, I think, was what kind of disturbance or lack of disturbance, if you could kind of focus in on that area, between the new proposed access road and the intersection? You know, basically, what's happening between the public road and the panels up in that corner?
Just tree cutting to the property line.
Yeah, right in this area, right?
Right, that was where I was asking, yep.
Stumps will be left, so we won't be regrading that area, but we plan to declare that for tree shade management. These are butt tricks.
On the northerly side, do you think that'll be necessary?
That's what we have.
Yeah, this is the northerly side right there, excuse me, yep.
Is there a buffer requirement we should consider, Ben, on that northerly side?
There is a site distance, but where we already have the post office across the street, and that's where that road is, I assume, across the street, that shows on your map. I would assume that that would meet the site distance, but you can't go a lot farther than you hit the butt tricks property.
One next door.
Yeah, butt tricks next door.
Yeah, we did actually try to line our driveway up with the driveway that's across San Page Road.
But that one down there was approved. I would assume that this one here would meet the same criteria.
And again, the traffic out here, after construction, is going to be minimal at best. These folks usually hire a local contractor to go out there twice a year and mow, and then you might get to pick up there a couple more times, just to go out to look at the panels and make sure they're working. So from a traffic perspective, site distance perspective, there really is not much impact on that road.
I mean, after you get your road in, the traffic company going is going to be very limited.
What kind of maintenance goes along with a project like this once it's up and going?
Not much. I mean, really mowing. And then every now and then, they, obviously, they've got machines that talk to each other from this site back to their home office, hoping they can see if some of the panels have gone out. But usually, with these things, what they're finding is 20 years is kind of like the prime lifespan of these. And it's not like they go out there 20 years and say, oh, it's not working anymore. What they see at 20 years is the efficiency starts to drop. So a lot of the projects in Mass that are older have been lasting 30, 35 years, and they're okay with losing 15% efficiency. So they don't really have to replace these that often. And the wiring's all protected underground. There's really not a lot of maintenance that goes on.
This is my uneducated opinion. These are, like anything else, electronic units. Yet over time, whether it's these light bulbs or whatever, they lose their efficiency and they lose that, and that's why you've got to keep replacing them. I just, and the reason why I'm kind of a stickler on this escrow account is because the town has been stuck before with contaminated property, and we still own it today, many acres of it. And this is why I'm kind of a stickler on that, because we have been stuck with this before. That's all, not on this, because this is our only second application for something like this. So it's really new to everybody, but...
Yeah, and it's important to know that there are no hazardous materials associated with it. It's all silicon-based. If something breaks out here and leaks on the ground, it's not going to be a hazardous material. The transformer might have some vegetable oil in it to function. Sometimes they are truly oil, but they're all double-contained, triple-contained, built to the appropriate specs. So it's just a bunch of metal and wires at some point with some silicone on the inside.
I agree, I appreciate that. I have no more, otherwise, unless you guys want me to just keep talking.
What kind of foundation is under the panels? Is it pounded posts?
They're screw-type foundations.
Screw augers, yeah.
Yeah, so they will be about six or eight feet long with maybe four to six feet long auger at the bottom, and it gets screwed right in with a special machine that locates each screw location.
How deep?
Six to eight feet.
Wow.
A little for us, yeah.
Does it go right into the ledge?
In ledge, they'll drive piles or they'll do like a concrete ballast.
What are they made out of?
I can't recall. I can't recall, some sort of metal.
She's seen them go more than that.
I have.
Do you have a profile view of what this might look like from the road? Like, how much of it where is visible?
We don't right now, no.
I think the only spot, we are trying to leave a considerable buffer wherever we can. The spot, I think to Ben's point earlier, on the north side, is where we're sort of clearing up to the roadway. So we'll look at that area again to see if we can maybe pull our clearing limits back into the property a little bit to provide sort of a natural buffer through there. But there will be some views from San Page Road especially, because some of that area is pretty open already. But again, what you'll generally see, because this area is so flat, is you'll generally see the seven-foot-high fence. You'll be able to see through it a little bit, and then you'll see the first couple rows of panels, and that's all you'll be able to see. It's not like it goes up a mountainside where you can see the whole 14 acres of metal hanging out there, so it should be a pretty minimal impact to the views.
I think it would be helpful, somewhere in a details sheet, to show how the panels would be arranged as kind of a typical, maybe with that screw foundation system, as well as details on fencing. You know, I don't think that there's any requirement to have it completely screened from view or to have an opaque-type fencing. I think it's just more trying to give the board a sense of what visually, especially on that northern end, it would be looking at.
Okay.
Okay.
What type of fencing, did you say, goes on?
It's a farm fence. The holes are a little bit more open than a chain link fence.
So are they rectangles? What do you mean by farm fence?
I think, so it's like a high tensile wire fence almost.
Rectangles, versus...
Yeah.
Like a rectangle?
Yeah, very similar.
Sheep fencing.
And what of the poles?
Feather hooks.
Yeah.
Six or eight inches?
It's four or six, maybe. The chain link fence is usually two-by-two, and these are just the rectangular with a four-by-four opening.
It's the same fencing that Art's already got there, really, basically, for the DFNs.
Well, it is the center of town, so I think everybody is wise to be thinking about what it's going to look like right at the post office, right across the street from the park. And maybe leaving just a little bit on that corner. The rest of it, I don't think that's going to bother anybody. I think it's great idea, personally.
Awesome.
I'd have to agree with that.
I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, the way it's been right now, you can drive by, you come out and you look up the orchard forever, but I do know at our other site, we require buffer planning to try to hide some of it from the road. I mean, it wasn't like a half a mile or something, but some kind of buffer planted to, so like Pat says, you, nobody minds looking at an apple orchard, but sometimes you don't want to look at other stuff. So we have done that in the past. Right, Gavin?
Oh, definitely.
I think we'll have to change the speed limit.
So really, no traffic from this at all, you know?
It's such a low-impact use, and that's why they can put it all...
No septic at all?
No, there's no building, there's no waste, yeah. It's why they can put it all over the state. I mean, we're working on projects as far north as Madawaska.
Wow, that's good.
And these things just go in. You look at them every now and then, and they operate.
Let the sun do the work, right?
We should get going.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you so much. This has been very helpful. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, y'all.
See you again soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Have a nice night.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Before you go, there is one thing I'd like to...
Is it the letter of authorization?
I'm on. My next meeting is our public hearing.
Yeah, the 18th.
Okay. I just wanted, I thought that's what it was, but you want me to announce that, too?
Oh, yep. Public meeting will be March 18th at 6:00 PM for, was it the auditions, right? For audience changes. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make my move. How's second?
All in favor?